And call the meeting in order. Get this work session underway. First item on tonight's agenda will be discussion on the ADECA recreational trails grant discussion. Mr. Richard Johnson.
Thank you.
And Ms. Sherri Lee Boatop.
I know that in your pocket sometimes things are not as detailed, but this is probably a little better reproduction quality. Hate to kill trees for no purpose. This is an opportunity that is available to us as a city for a recreational trails program grant that is administered through ADECA. And as we were looking at what opportunities that we had are defining a deficiency in our recreational trails area, and I understand the difference between this and a sidewalk grant is this can't be along the roadway, it has to be within park boundaries and public spaces such as that. It was noted that on our North Beach Park, we have a heavy user of runners, joggers, walkers, bicyclers that are trying to use the same, in many cases, one direction, one way narrow roadway, and when a vehicle and those pedestrians intersect, somebody has to step out of the way or give way. And the concept was can we retrofit our existing park layout and include a multi-use, diverse-use, non-motorized trail system that tries to parallel the roadway to give the same access to pedestrians to the majority of the park, but also give them a dedicated separate way to do it. And so we've come up with a conceptual layout, conceptual budget, and I understand this is a conceptual layout of how, what we want to accomplish. It's not a final design determination or anything of that nature. We were hoping to have already vetted this through the bicycle pedestrian committee, but unfortunately they changed their meeting to tomorrow from last week, so we will be sitting down and going through this and getting recommendations there as well. This is an 80/20 grant, up to a total project of 500,000, meaning that if we were to be successful, the maximum amount the grant would pay would be 400,000, and the city's match would be 100,000. One of the things that we are at least conceptually pursuing in this grant is the majority of the trail surface, as opposed to a concrete or asphalt, is what's called decomposed granite. It kind of is installed like an asphalt in the sense is that you put a rock base down and then you actually put a final wearing layer of two inches of decomposed granite that has a stabilizer included in it that somewhat acts like a cementous binder, and it is wetted and roller compacted until you get that two inches compacted. And it does set up very firm, but it will still give you the softer look of a natural material. As I understand, joggers and runners really like that type of material because it gets a little bit more give than asphalt. And even though I've not had any direct experience with it, just looking at that system used in other places, that when you do have some root uplift or some damage, you really just kind of break it back up, recompact it, restabilize it, and add any additional material, take the plate tamper out there and just do a patch in it and move on. It is capable of taking drainage and water running across it to a certain degree and should give a really appropriate look and fit. It is not inexpensive, thus the expense of the grant. If you look at just in the preliminary budget of the 500,000, almost 250,000 is related to the base material, the border material, and the decomposed granite. But I think it would be very appropriate for the park setting that we have down there. Be glad to answer any questions, and hopefully you will next meeting in two weeks have a resolution. Stacy McKean, who's our grant coordinator and writer, has got that already in the till. And we've got to have the application in by February 9th. I do want to caution, even though I'm excited about this project, there's $2.6 million available. We're asking for 400,000 of it statewide. It's probably not quite as a sure odds type grant as we've been accustomed to, but nothing ventured, nothing gained. Any questions?
Yeah, I have several. What is the, and as I look at this trail, you know, there's an existing roadway and parking. I cannot readily determine what is going, is being proposed. The concrete decomposed granite wooden boardwalk, is that, which one of these lines?
You see the outside?
And the bigger picture over there, when you get a chance to look at it, but basically we would pick up off the existing sidewalks at the very south part of your picture at the municipal pier, have a pedestrian crossing to the east side of the entrance to North Beach Park.
Where the bathroom is there at the very bottom?
Yeah, just out of that. And that's actually decomposed granite trails. Where you see a little darker hatching, that's actually boardwalk to either get across an existing drainage feature.
Is it all this?
Yes, that's it.
All right.
And it loops back onto itself at just a little bit south of the north bathroom.
I'm with you. Okay.
So what, this conceptual, you have about 97 linear feet of new concrete sidewalk, 3,300 linear feet of decomposed granite, and about 500 linear feet of boardwalk. Again, if we're awarded the grant and we get final survey, and some of those will change based upon absolute design, but this is a conceptual to get us to the point to request the grant.
You know something else that we need, and Councilman Brown's out of town tonight. One of the things that we've been discussing as we've been going over budget numbers is we really would like to know, you know, the grants that we've applied for, what's been awarded, and what we're committed to right now. Because although it's, you know, we're paying 20 cents on the dollar, and we would love to, you know, say yes to every single grant, it makes sense. There is, you know, there is a point at which we don't have any money left to match grants.
That's right.
And it'd be nice just to know what we have budgeted, say, probably we wouldn't have to go out two, three, four years on that at the most and see what we have already committed to.
And that's, that's something I can sort of pull together.
I'd love to say these are all no brainers. I mean, yeah, it looks great. Does anybody else feel the same way?
We did present it to the advisory, the financial advisory board too, and it passed whatever that process is to move forward to you. But I know that they also don't know, and we don't always know what all we, or what opportunities will come down the pike. Some of them come last minute, we want to at least bring it forward if we think it makes sense.
Right.
But I can get those numbers together for what we already have committed.
Under this project, is this, this is to be done in-house or contractor work?
The actual work would be subbed out to an actual contractor. I think that we, the only professional services we'd have to contract out is some survey work, but our intent would do all the civil engineering design package in-house.
Okay. And estimates are that we could complete it on this budget on 500,000?
Well, I think, I think I've got a good number there. It's been real hard tracking down real-world prices for installed decomposed granite. The biggest challenge is, is not a lot of that type of work has been done in this area. That material does have to come out of central North Alabama. It doesn't naturally occur down here anywhere, so there is an expense in that haul cost. But I was very, very conservative in putting that number down, and I've even kind of bent the ear of some other folks if they can try to find me some real-world examples of pricing to see if we're, we're in that ballpark, but I think we are.
I had a question, Richard. You mentioned it's not necessarily a sure, as much of a sure thing just because there's a limited amount available. Is there a possibility, would they come back and say, okay, you're approved for 200,000, and then we're looking at 300,000? Do we have an opportunity to say, well, maybe we'll hold off on this this year and try again next year if they, or do they do that?
And, and that would, a scenario I could see happen is that they could say, we really like the concept, we want you to have this multi-use trail, but would you be willing to go to asphalt and we fund it at that level, which may be $200,000 less for the total project?
Gotcha.
I could see that, and that would be an option. Y'all could come back and say, no, we'll just pass and let it, let it go, or make that decision then. You know, and asphalt would be serviceable, it would, it would accomplish the same goal, and it would be less expensive.
And the other thing I wanted to mention is just more of a comment. I've had a lot of people mention to me that this area gets a lot of traffic from a lot of people that don't live here, and I don't want to be, you know, exclusive, but at the same time, you want to maximize these assets for your local citizens and make sure that they have access to it. And I'm not saying you want to discourage other people from using it, but how do you maybe address making sure that our own citizens have access to it first, or at least have a good opportunity to use it without being crowded out?
And that was something we've had to talk with ADECA to make sure there's not, not an issue. Right now, when it's certain times of the season when the demand is highest, we have a booth attendant, and whether you come in on foot, or bicycle, or not a bill, you pay an entrance fee, unless you're a citizen of Fairhope and have the
The decal.
The decal, or the sticker in your wallet or whatever, that gets you in. So we've been able, at least with a straight face, to tell ADECA that as far as the citizens of Fairhope are concerned, it's open to them at no charge year-round. Yes, there are times when it's visitors, it's limited to you have to pay to visit. And I think that will be one of the things we'll have to determine on how we regulate that trail crossing, and I've actually drawn it two ways, where one, it's striped out into the street, so they have to come to the booth then to get back on the trail, as opposed to bypassing around the rear of the bathroom. But that will have to be a final operational design consideration. But as I understand it, when the season is in and we are manning the booth, you, everybody pays, or you have a pass from as being a citizen of Fairhope.
It looks like this includes, I don't know if that's a reconstruction, or if there is our new peers, there are two of them.
Well, one of the things that Councilman Brown asked to include, and I included it in my notes, probably small, is that as part of this grant, that we take the existing peers and make them fully ADA successful.
Oh, that's making ADA.
So that's what that note is.
I got you.
We have a current sidewalk that runs between the parking and the pavilion that that could be tied into, as well as the pier coming up to the asphalt landing to get it ADA compliant. So that was an addition that he recommended, I thought was very good, so.
Okay. Any questions, council? Any further questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is MS4 dry weather screening, outfall assessment from the planning department.
Thank you, Council President. This item is really informational purposes only. Kim, my staff is here, and she's going to go with the MS4 permit, and what you may expect, you may get a phone call, so I'll turn it to Kim now, but this is something that we've done for a number of years, which will make sure you're all aware of what's, what's going on in case you get any phone calls or any comments.
This is part of our MS4 stormwater permit that we go out and look at outfalls every year, 20% to 25% of them. And the planning department and the public works department went in the field in December, and we looked at the, we did a schedule, and the ones we chose to look at were Point Clear Creek, watershed, Valana, Waterhole Branch, and a portion of Calpin Creek, because Calpin Creek is so large, we did one through 90 of those, like 90 of those. So the, once we did the outfall assessments, which is basically just an observation, looking for overgrowth, erosion, basic maintenance needs of outfalls, we had a checklist, and if there were maintenance concerns, we made a note of that. While some of those were city, and that falls back on public works, but the ones that were not city, or most of them are going to be POAs, property owner associations and subdivisions, so we have to have some way of notifying them just as a courtesy that they may have some maintenance needs on their outfalls. And we drafted a letter, and that letter would go out to the listed owner as per Baldwin County taxes. And it's just kind of a courtesy notification, so.
And it's important because a lot of times these outfalls, if they have debris in them or there's shrubbery or whatever, it can block the outfall, and water doesn't move as quickly, which causes backups, so just want to make you all aware of that, in case you get any phone calls from these letters we send out or anything else. I don't anticipate any problem, this is pretty routine, just want to make sure you guys are aware.
Do you have to notify people if they're, say they're retention pond or detention pond, whichever it may be, starts having a lot of growth in it, you know, the trees start growing and you just are decreasing that volume, and the grass is six foot tall, and they mow it and it, you know, fills up six inches?
That's one of the most common things we saw in the field is overgrowth or plugged pipes, but the O and M requirement every three years handles that as well. This is over and above that.
And the O and M is?
Operations and maintenance. For subdivisions since 2007, they have to turn in an engineered assessment every three years, say in the ponds functioning as originally designed. So this is over and above that. This is just a non-engineered visual assessment. Hopefully, the property owner will appreciate the eyes in the field, just looking at and say, hey, you've got a, you know, head wall that's got a lot of erosion there, you might want to fix that, it could cause a liability issue for you.
They always appreciate that.
Whether they'll do anything about it or not, at least we've reached out and let them know what we saw.
How much of an effort is that? I mean, it's a lot of, it's a lot of subdivision, I mean, is this, is this like weeks or months? Or what does it start?
Well, the planning department and, or Buford King and I did the field work in the planning department, and Richard Johnson had a couple of guys in the field from public works doing the Calpin Creek portion. It took us about three weeks off and on in the field, it was a lot of field work.
But, but they go to the site, traverse whatever they have to go through to get there, they photograph it, document it, and it's, it's pretty detailed, and so it is, it is quite an effort, but it's an important effort to ensure that they're all properly functioning, so you don't have any stormwater problems, or we can minimize them as much as possible, but it is a tremendous effort. But it's part of the permit as well.
And if y'all are interested in the results, we have like a spreadsheet that has all the, you know, kind of boring results on each one, but strictly our opinion, eyeball in it and.
So that's it?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Recreation Center Building and Professional Services, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening. This is a kind of a project that's lingered on really more longer than it should have, and I apologize for that, but we did receive bids at one time, and about $180,000, which tried to maintain the existing framing that was in there, and when you look at the attachments of the soffit to the framing, I wasn't sure that it was going to be able to be salvaged to be able to be used in the construction, so I didn't know how much that may add to the project through change orders. And then the other part of the whole thing was the lack of ventilation in the soffit, and so we were trying to look at a different style where we brought the soffit back, about half of the width of the overhang of the existing roof line, so that we could ventilate the roof line and try to promote, you know, a cleaner atmosphere in that soffit area. And after all of that transpired, we talked more with Tom Cool, and we met with Walt Bolton from BES, and talked about just there is a need for air conditioning and heating in that, the suspended heaters are way up closer to the ceiling, and this, I don't know what the E-Pilot building is, but I'd say it's probably 16 feet. And we're probably spending a lot of energy on putting heat out, but it's probably just staying closer to the top of the roof than just getting down to where the people are. So we looked at a different type of heating system that may be more of an infrared system that's a little bit lower. So what I'd like to do is work on the soffit first, get it done, but make sure we understand what our procedures may be down the road for looking at a climate control scheme for the building, and whether that's sealing off some of the space and ventilating just the soffit, or whether it's ventilating the building through the soffit, I'm not sure at this point, but that's what we're looking at there.
I was wondering about that climate control, because I've seen mention of that, and I mean, it is a big swimming pool with a lot of water, and in the summer, you're going to have, I don't know that you could ever expect to get the moisture out of there, so, you know, some ventilation up there, you know, might help with.
Right. And just so the air moves and everything I've, you know, been involved with from a building perspective and attics and ventilation is, you have to have ventilation in those spaces to keep the moisture out, so I mean, that's.
And what do you do with bathrooms, because they're extremely humid, but you have swimmers going in there with wet swimsuits on, and I mean, and, you know, it's just water all over the floor. I mean, I don't know that you ever.
There is, and there is an existing dehumidification system in there that was designed for the bathroom area, and I don't know that it's been serviced and in a working condition for several years now.
I'm thinking it's not working. Is that right, Tom? I see you shaking your head. It's not working, is it? Is this work inclusive of repairing that?
The entire, well, no, we're talking about just the soffit work first.
Just the soffit work, okay.
But we're going to try to work on a plan for climate control in the building as we go through this process, and that's what our goal is right now. The first stage is to, to soffit repair. We need to get that done.
And I don't know, is there any forced air ventilation in that roof at all?
There's some vent, no, sir.
I don't think there's forced air.
No, it's sealed. Right now, all the air that gets up into the top part of that thing, there is a gap where the cantilever pearls go across the end wall, and it's open to the soffit, so the humidity that's in that upper part of that ceiling, it just accumulates in that soffit and has nowhere to go. You know, the soffit's made up of metal studs that frame it, and then there's wall sheeting that's basically gypsum, you know, that the metal lath and stucco is attached to. And it looks to me like the, there's some rust in places that don't look like it's failed now, but there are some rust on that soffit now that look like it can continue to get worse and worse and be a problem. And I don't know if that's from moisture that's wicked in through the wallboard, that's from the air in the soffit that's not moving. There's no ventilation in the soffit, I mean, it's just dead air.
And you've got chlorine gas, it's extremely corrosive in there, which is, you know, adding to it.
It's trapped up in there and just lingers on that metal.
Right. And there are some, some of the connectors, you can see the rust on them, and I think the metal studs have a galvanized coating, so they don't look quite as bad, but there are some connectors of the roof system that, when you look at the bottom side of the roof pearling where the, where the roof sheeting is, it looks like there's some corrosion in some of those, so it'd be nice to have a kind of a more thorough look at the building before we jump in.
What do you need from council?
Well, what we'd like to do is negotiate with BES for a price not to exceed, and at the next council meeting, submit a contract for that service.
But we don't have a resolution on tonight's agenda to authorize a
I think I
Negotiation of a fee schedule.
Right. You're correct. I got that information in a little bit late.
Can we maybe talk tomorrow about getting it on the next one, and if it's such a rush, you know, we might can do a couple of things at one time if we wanted to negotiate a fee and execute a contract. Get with Lisa and get with me on that too, if you will.
And I will tell you all that this afternoon, I've had some chills, and I don't, I may be catching what everybody else has been catching, I don't want to stay for too long, but maybe I'll be here tomorrow, I hope I am.
Yeah, well, we can talk by phone if you want. There's a couple of questions that I have.
Breathe that way.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Okay, debris management plan for the city of Fairhope, Mr. Saraceno.
How are you all doing this evening?
Very good.
What that is, is, you know, sometime back, we passed the debris removal contract. The debris removal contract covers who's going to do it. The debris removal plan covers how it's going to be done, and it's a FEMA requirement for allowing us actually more money in case of, God forbid, we have a major disaster. What I'm asking you all to sign tonight is strictly a formality. That's just going to send, get it to go up to the state for approval. The state will approve it, and then it'll go to FEMA for approval, then it'll come back to you all for you all to adopt it. So it's just really strictly a formality for them to look at the plan.
Is this something council signs, or something the mayor needs to sign? Do we need to authorize?
It's signed by multiple people, the council, the mayor. The council, the mayor, the signature, I see. It's already been signed by most people. It's signed by Dell Linder, myself, Richard Johnson, and then all the council people and the mayor.
All the council members need to sign it? You're just kind of informing us what we're signing, so we just, we sign it in between meetings or whenever? Is it, if you have some documents there we can sign, we can pass it around here?
And then once you do that, I'll mail it off to the state, and the state will approve it, and then it'll go off to FEMA, we'll get it approved, and we'll bring it back in front of you all for adoption.
Okay. And so when we hired that consulting company, they helped us put together this plan, and we hired a consultant to help with this plan?
Yes, sir. Dima Corporation.
Okay.
We had, just to give you kind of a heads up, we had some problems. One of the individuals in the, in the company got sick, and so it took a lot longer than expected because he was the owner of the company, and anyway, it took about double the time it should have taken, because he got real sick.
Anybody have any questions for John?
I got, I got the wrong name in here for me. I'm going to sign it anyway. Jack Robinson is my alter ego.
I apologize for not catching the typo that Dima wrote. I'm going to blame it on someone else, but it's my fault for not catching it. But that'll be fine, as long as when it's adopted, the correct name's in there.
Exactly.
Well, I could have some fun with that. Okay. All right.
Robert's not here.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you, John. Appreciate that work.
Thanks, John.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Jay. My name's Ray.
Committee updates. Councilman Robinson?
None. We've got a lot, a lot of meetings scheduled in the next couple of weeks.
You don't have a lot of meetings over the holidays?
Did not. Not with my committees.
Okay. All right. Councilman Boone?
Actually, no report. We had no meetings.
Okay. Councilman Conyers?
Also, no report. Been light, light, I mean, chocolate and champagne event is coming up soon for the library, at the library.
Go to the library and get them.
Are they still available?
I believe so.
When did you say it was?
I'm trying to pull that up. Exactly. It's, it's at the end of the month. Let me just pull it up. I don't want to give the wrong date, so I'll look that up, and I'll tell you all as soon as I find it.
Okay. While he's looking that up, I'll just give you some commentary on the budget process. I know council members, you want to know a little bit about that. Councilman Brown and I met, oh, three or four days in a row last week, a couple hours, two, three hours at a time, and, and we're going through the budget, and we went through a fairly significant iteration, I would say, and we've given all of our edits, and some of them were guestimates on, to the finance department so that we can kind of hit the reset button and get a big overall view of where we're at. I did want to point out a couple of things. Just on Friday afternoon, there was about $330,000 that wasn't, it was just a sheet left out, request from the rec committee, which we have not gone through and made suggestions. We haven't edited that. So that was $330,000 that we were unaware of, that was asked for. The, the other thing that I thought was extremely important was that the budget numbers, the revenue numbers that are presented to us have, are inclusive of rate increases for all four of our utilities, electric, gas, water, and sewer. And if you take those rate increases into account, and since we haven't passed the budget now, we're four months into it, you could see that we would be behind on those revenue projections, and the longer we delay, the further behind we fall on those revenue projections because those rate increases aren't instituted. But what I say is that this council really has some big decisions to make on those revenue projections, because if we decide not to, to place in those revenue, or those rate increases, then our revenue projections are going to be even that much lower. So I would say, go back to your budget book, the, the rate increases are in there, they're not put in in terms of percentages, but I have some of that calculated them on percentage basis, based on actuals from last year, so we're probably, you know, maybe within a quarter or half a percent of what, what it would actually be. But I would encourage you to look at that and provide feedback, because that's going to be, be very key. If, if we did not put in those rate increases, the revenue projections will fall well short of what they are. And I say well short, that doesn't mean, you know, 10% or 20%, but hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Is, are these rate increases the ones that we had talked about before, where, under certain utilities, when we hire new positions for that?
They are, they are not labor cost adjustment factors.
They are not, so there's an increase on top of that?
That's correct. So it's vital, I'll give you my two cents worth if you want to hear it, is that I don't have a problem with, with some increases. I think some of these have, rates have lagged behind for some time. We made a correction on our garbage collection fees a short time ago. I think that was a good move, and I think that some of these rate increases are, that are suggested are probably necessary, and maybe even the full amounts necessary, but I struggle with how to institute, you know, to implement that all at one time. That's, that's a lot to chew on, so I think that you need to really give it some thought of what you, what you're comfortable with, what you think is, is fair.
Do we have a Do we have a, is it in the, I don't remember ever seeing this before, is there a competitive rate list that we can see in some of these services that we're offering?
There is, and that's a really good suggestion.
Recycling gave it to us when they brought forward, you know, the changing net service collection fee, what everybody else is paying, how, what services were offered, and how much it was, and so we can see, because anytime you're changing service rates, it's an unpopular move, and rightfully so, but when you can show that the services you're providing are still right in line, or hopefully less than what the competitive rate is, that helps that. I mean, we were way behind in recycling and garbage pickup fee. I mean, and we're still lower than everybody else for the service we provide, and I'd hope that we'd be kind of in that ballpark with our other services.
I think that's a great idea. I think Mr. Peterson left because he wasn't feeling good, but Mr. Wachina, if you'll help me with the, and I don't see...
Dan's here.
Dan's here. So for the four utilities, is Robert here? If you, maybe even if you know, if you could give us a comparison for what was presented to us, and I don't have my budget book in front of me, if you don't have those numbers of what was presented, I'm sure you must have had a hand in it.
I did some research for Mr. Peterson, but he did all the calculations, and I don't...
Help me remind him to give us a comparison on that. I think that'd be, I think that'd be real helpful.
The rate structures?
Rate structures, you know, compared to, you know, local municipalities, white municipalities. I think that was real helpful on the garbage. I haven't had any pushback from that.
I know he had that, but not with us.
Right. Okay. And then, as far as that goes, there were some, we talked to several department heads, most notably, just because it's as recent as this afternoon again. I know Mr. Johnson has come up with some numbers on some of these very large capital purchases, and we had put, or not we, the mayor had put lease numbers in as opposed to purchase numbers, and you can do that to make your budget numbers lower, but you do it if it makes sense, and it seems to make sense. Those lease figures seem to be really good, and I think Richard found some even better numbers today. Richard, I haven't had a chance to reply, but I looked at that, and we were definitely, we had recommended going with your recommendation on those large items. So there was maybe one item that wasn't so much of a deal to lease, just like any other lease. Some of them are good, some of them not so good. So I think maybe three or four out of the five recommendations we stuck with. And there's literally thousands of line items, and, you know, 95% of them, you know, haven't changed. Any questions about that? Anybody have anything specific about the budget they want to ask? Sorry I didn't bring in the budget, I didn't think we wanted to go through it line by line, but anyway, we're continuing to go over that. All right, department heads, who wants to go first? Lynn, do you have any report? Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, and just one update, one of those lingering projects, as you know, we had a TAP grant that was a pedestrian trail on US 98 that had a component over Fly Creek for a pedestrian bridge. It has arrived, its components are sitting out on a tractor trailer truck at 32 and 13 right now, no, not 32 and 13, but they were going to start today, but as you know, the weather didn't cooperate, so we should see that contract as soon as weather clears, that they're going to punch that out, and they think they'll have that project completely finished by the end of this month, so we're excited to get that one.
Aluminum?
It's aluminum. Gator Bridge is the manufacturer out of Florida, and the approaches, as well as the seventy foot span, is 100% aluminum, even the decking, so it's low maintenance, and I reckon the only sad part is, is where it's going to sit right now, it's going to be real hard, it's going to be the prettiest bridge that nobody ever sees, because it's going to kind of sit down and behind the wood line there, so we may want to talk about maybe doing some brush cutting, so people can see our shiny new bridge.
That'll be another hit.
Bridge below.
No, just the brush, just so you can see through the trees. I will tell you that we've had a series of interactions with Alabama Mercy Management, just so you know, FEMA, and I understand their resource challenge right now, they're dealing with Puerto Rico, and Texas, and South Florida, they are going to let the state folks handle all the coordination on the public assistance, and a little late to the party, we're getting some feedback of concerns about a couple of our projects. We had a pretty long conference call with Mr. Peterson, and Mr. Saraceno, and myself, and Mr. Wolf Shalina, and I think we've addressed those concerns. They're getting a little hung up on how we went about including disadvantaged business enterprises, whereas when we prepared the bid documents, we did ask Mr. Ames, it was the last project he did, it was going to be federal dollars, we wanted to make sure we met all those requirements. We are having trouble verifying if a couple of steps were completed in that process. DeeDee does not know, and we're still working on that, but I think, in my opinion, in my argument today with our state person, is that I think we can show that we met the intent of the federal requirements, and we did what we were supposed to do. And then they're gotten hung up on a little smaller, a little over $10,000 one that Joe has before you tonight for electrical repairs, and I think they're applying a standard for a bid level project compared to something that is just a quote in meet state bid law project, and we, I think we got at least a little bit more comfort on that, that there's no issues. The biggest concern is, is that if sometime in the future FEMA came down and argued to us, and they said, "Well, you were specifically supposed to have made sure that that bid was sent to this website to go out and be shared with these disadvantaged business and minority owned businesses," and FEMA, that theoretically, they could challenge the fact that they could draw back the money. I think, I'm comfortable enough to say that we, at least what I've seen so far in meeting with DeeDee this morning, we have met the intents of the federal regulations. I think that right now, the state guy is adding a little heavier requirement than what the federal requirement says, and I got in somewhat of an argument with him on the phone, because I said, "Well, I want to see in writing where it says to do that." He says, "Well, we don't have it in writing, that's just what we were told." So I'm not sure I was a fan of that response, but we are working through that, but it is aggravating as can be that we are ninety days removed from the hurricane, and we're still not getting any clear guidance from FEMA or their proxies. And we still haven't had the official meeting on these projects to, you know, to make sure that, you know, eyes are being dotted and t's are being crossed, but I did want to make you aware that there's some tension there. I know, I think Mr. Saraceno nearly passed out on us on a late Friday afternoon, but we had a meeting today, got on a conference call, I feel better, but just making you aware, and, you know, the issue with the pier repair project, that contract's signed and executed, they're cut loose, and they were going to start mobilizing today, but weather didn't participate, so, but I just wanted to just make sure of where that, and some of it is interpretation, but I, and again, for example, they determine on Friday that we needed permits to do the pier repairs, and my response to Mr. Saraceno was, "No, they're not required," but I had to get emails from the Corps today, State Lands, as well as Natural Resources Conservation and ADM saying permits weren't required. But again, that's just dealing with the bureaucracy that you got to deal with, but I did want to make you aware of that. So that's been our pleasure today, is we're from FEMA, and we're here to help, so, thank you.
Thank you. Joe, you have anything? Shirley?
Just found the rate comparison sheet from, for utilities. Yeah, so we'll get that out. I need Richard to look at it, though, because it's been a few months. So for me, what's going on, the South Fairhope Community Action Plan has wrapped up, and they're pulling the report together. They did some online surveying, they did door-to-door surveying, Robert came to the report out meeting that was at Rotary Youth Club, and then on the 22nd, they're going to come, David Perks will come to the work session. We've asked, I've asked Robert to sponsor that, to be on the agenda, but anyone can do that, so that you can hear from him what the findings were. And we have communicated with y'all, you know, and mayor, and let everyone know what was going on throughout, but I think it was really interesting, and I think accomplished exactly what we wanted to accomplish, so that'll be the next council meeting work session. Then the other thing we have coming up is the, do you remember the ADECA Stormwater Grant that we got for the storm drain medallions? So that program is just going to ramp up. They are, we're going to have art competition with the students at Fairhope High School, their art club and their environmental club, and the Environmental Advisory Board is working, we've been working together. I think you were, were you at one of those meetings?
Yes.
Yes, and so now, we're developing with Weeks Bay and some other organizations, the actual brochure that will go out, will go out on Earth Day, they'll start putting the storm drains in, the medallions in, right the day before Earth Day. So we're going to get some groups of kids to go out with volunteers that will be trained on how to put them in, in just one area, not all over the city, not a thousand of them, but it'll be more for community education, to teach people about what to put in our storm drains and what not to put there. So that's moving forward, and the other thing I just wanted to update you about is the technical advisory grant we got, that brought in people to help with the marina. If you recall that, they're working with Drew, and there's a whole group of people that will come up with the plan to move forward and execute the resilient and clean marina, and also to look at working waterfront plan, so how will that marina be laid out for best use? And so they'll make those recommendations, they've already done a preliminary design, but we'll, what I'd like to do is roll that out, kind of a state thing, I mean, even invite state tourism director to come down and roll that design out when it's finalized. As part of that grant, one thing I did not realize is that we also get someone that will help us work on creating a nature tourism plan, so we can get our blue ways in place, and we're going to put together a committee of citizens to help give input to that, and that will be things like, you know, kayaking, or waterfront activities, all these things that we can put together for, specific to Fairhope. We have a lot of that around Fairhope, but specific to us, so that on our website and things, and people want to come here, they'll have a tourism plan, a map, and things to do around that. So once we have that plan in place, I think there'll be other, a lot of other opportunities for us to partner with organizations.
When were the technical advisory grant recommendations we made?
They're going to have a first draft on the 15th.
Of January?
Of January, yes. 15th of January, and that will be very preliminary.
I'm just waiting, because we, you know, we need to get the boatyard lease specs out, and until we have that master plan that we've decided on, we can't do it.
We're still waiting for Sawgrass to commit to a date, but they'll come, we keep getting the next week and the next week, they're extraordinarily busy.
And that's for the survey and the layout of the, that's for the survey?
Right. Do that before we do the layout. Now, Richard was jumping all over them last week, trying to get a date serving, but we don't have one yet.
Well, the, well, with, could, is it possible these recommendations could, you know, change that, you know, survey, that, I would see where it's possible, right?
The survey could change the recommendations.
Yeah, vice versa.
And we're extremely fortunate, I mean, we have some of the best people in the region who are pro bono helping us with this, so we really trust their expertise, and they've been fantastic. So we'll see what they come back with, and then, of course, we give input to it, it's our plan, it's not their plan, but they're helping us.
Do you need any input from the city council as to what you'd like to see down there?
I mean, we always like input from city councils, of course.
That depends on what input you want to get, Jack.
So you got the Lynn answer, but yeah, so as soon as we have something, we would love, you know, for everyone to look at it. I mean, I'm all about participation and input to everything we put together.
Okay.
But that's it for me.
Thank you. Chief Battis?
We made it through to the new year by the hardest with all this nice weather we had, and we got, Monday we'll have the Dr. King Parade starting over at Stempson Era on Young Street, coming up north to the Civic Center, then we'll be getting ready for our three parades, so we're going to have a busy time. Also, I had a call this afternoon from one of the merchants, well, I went to the merchants' meeting last Wednesday, and they had the ABC board in to explain to them what they could do and what they couldn't do, poised alcohol and stuff like that, and the question come up about the entertainment district, and so they explained that to them, how that worked, and they got the letter and all that stuff. And so this afternoon, I got a call from one of the merchants, and was asking me, would I speak tonight on the entertainment district, and I told her that I wasn't intended speaking unless I was called on, and I would hope to be out of here before that time got here. But anyway, I told them it would be best if they wanted to come and voiced the opinion about they didn't want it, and the group that was there Wednesday morning, the biggest portion of them didn't want it, and so that's what she called in and asked, so that's where that was.
Thank you, Chief. Wayne?
Just want to mention real quickly, you may recall several months ago, the map viewer we contracted for with Key Consulting, we've got that, we're working on internally, just checking it, make sure it's all working properly and it's all correct, and so hopefully, Lynn, in a couple of weeks, we'll be putting that out on the website. It's a neat tool, you can search parcel numbers, names, so forth, and you can see the zoning of the other property and the different jurisdictions and so forth, it's a neat tool, so. But hopefully, in two weeks, we'll be pushing it out to the public.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Chief Ellis?
Fire Department's as busy as ever. We finished December with 98 calls for the month, and the calendar year for 2017, we finished with 1,029 calls, which is virtually equal to the fiscal year, but this is the first time that we, the fire department's broken 1,000 calls, so we're a very busy department right now.
And I believe you had officer elections recently?
Yes, sir.
Maybe congratulations are in order?
Thank you. I was re-elected to the office of chief, Daniel Moore and Tim McEwen are both assistant chiefs, and Mark Pallucci is the treasurer, and Kenislava is the secretary, and that's your board of directors for the year of 2018.
Thank you, Chief, congratulations. Mr. McCrory?
Roll tide, that's all I got.
Roll tide. Thought we might make it through the meeting room out there.
Yeah, you are.
Jill? Eric?
And just so you know, in honor of my son, I'm actually wearing an Alabama shirt for an LSU fan, that's unheard of, but at the supervisors' meeting, I had given the mayor and everybody our calendar year update on our numbers, and just so you know, we permitted 1,115 residential projects this past year, about 380 of those were new homes, the rest were renovations, additions, things of that nature. We also had 60 commercial projects, all told, with every land disturbance, you know, every kind of permit we issued, just an individual electrical permit, something like that, we did over 5,200 permits last year, and the final inspection count for the year was 10,553. So, Building Department, along with the rest of the city, is rolling along.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric. Who do you leave out?
Tom Cooley?
Oh, Tom?
I don't know.
Drew Cranes?
Drew, where's Drew?
Drew.
Oh, hey, Drew. You have a report?
I don't have any.
Okay. All right, let's move into the agenda meeting. Turn to your agenda, please. Too bad we can't start our meeting early, isn't it?
Especially tonight.
That's what I'm saying. All right, item number six, Mr. Dias, you'll be here for that. Also, number seven, Wayne. Okay, number eight, yes, we kind of, that's already been introduced, we can debate that at the time, council. Debate that at the time, council. Number nine, Eric, nine?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 10. Who would speak to that? Chief, Chief S?
Sledge would be here to speak to that.
Sledge, okay. Okay, item 10.
That's a three-year contract.
Yeah, that should say, have you got any papers on that? That's a three-year contract. Also, Lisa? This says Southern Light, who is now Unity.
We can change if it has to be.
Marcus, do you have an opinion on that? I'm not sure that Southern Light is still proper to put in that contract. And they were bought by Unity, Southern Light was.
Unity or its successor.
Okay.
What's Southern Light, Ellis, they doing?
Are they still operating it? Southern Light, even though?
They are still operating.
I don't know that.
What does it say?
Southern Light, Ellis, they doing business under Unity.
Oh, they're doing business under Unity Fiber. Okay, all right. Just want to make sure that's. Okay. And I guess that'll be Jeff.
Yes.
Okay, number 12. The Sewer Department, will that be, Dan, will you handle that? And number 13. Chief Ellis, will you be here for that? John?
Just to give you a heads up, there's one typo in there. It's going to be for servicing. It's not going to be for, I'm not, I'm sorry, inspections, not servicing.
So, take out the word to purchase annual servicing?
Yes, sir.
And not inspections?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Inspections are not servicing.
I said it wrong. To purchase annual inspections.
Yes, sir.
Y'all got that changed on there? Okay. Item 14, will that be you, Dan, or roll up doors for the Water Department?
Yes.
Okay, item 15, electrical repairs. Joe, will that be you or someone else handling that grant? Okay, and 16 on the light, will that be you also, Joe? Or is that facilities? I mean, can you handle that? I can almost handle it.
I mean, it's, it's.
It is, it's switches.
Right. The lighting control panel is died and they have to replace it. The replacement kit is not available.
Okay, I think that's it. All right, what's that? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, so, council, I'm going to ask you to add a request of the marina. This would be item 18. And this would be to, they did request an open bids for the split fuel tank that we discussed several weeks ago. And I think you have the bid tabulations in there, $62,000. Drew, would you speak to this or Lynn? Who would speak to this? We have questions. Drew? Okay. Do you mind, council, if I walk this on tonight? Okay. Okay. All right, anybody got anything else? Got 30 minutes?
Well, I can add that the Chocolate and Champagne event for the library is Saturday, January 27th at 6:30.
Jack, you wanted to delete one agenda item?
I'm sorry, what was that?
You wanted to delete one agenda item.
Number five.
No, I'll, I'll address that at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, council, we adjourn until, let's, let's get here promptly.